I'd like to call the February 21st Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Thank you all for coming tonight. Our first order of business is the invocation by our county manager, Ms. Sharon Griffin.
Thank you Chairman Bright and Commissioners, and good evening. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Please bless all of those who have gathered here this evening. Lord be our shield and guide us in everything that we do. Father, we pray for our military, our first responders, and our frontline workers who continue to serve our community and our country with tremendous courage. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, please join me in a moment of silence. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance by Assistant County Manager, Ms. Sherri Slater, please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I recognize our elected officials tonight. Sheriff Miller, thank you sir for being here. Amiga Charman, our Sheriff Deeds, thank you for being here. Alderman Richard Grant from North Tussle Beach, thank you sir for being here. And I'd always recognize Colonel Thomas from the Sheriff's Office, come and make our meeting secure, thank you. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control of. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules and procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period on the agenda, which is at the end. With no other items to be considered, I would like to have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried unanimously. Is there any item any Commissioner would like to have removed from the consent agenda for a discussion later?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries the agenda and the consent agenda is adopted. We are now at item three, which is public comment. Ms. Griffin, is anyone signed up for public comment?
Chairman Bright, no one has signed up this evening for our public comment period.
Okay, we'll move on then with item four, which is presentations with the Onslow County Hospital Authority Audit Report. Would I invite them to come up to the podium and give us that report?
Good evening, thank you for the chance to be here with you. So I'm going to report out today, my name is Kevin Leder, I'm with Clifton Larson Allen, and we are the auditors for the Onslow County Hospital Authority. And I'll report out today on the fiscal year 2021 audit, and that's for the fiscal year ended September 30th of 2021. So we did issue the audit at the end of January, and we did issue an unmodified opinion on those financial statements. That is a clean opinion, I think the opinion that you as County Commissioners have probably come to expect in recent years, and also similar opinion to those issued in prior years. We did issue the audit and perform the audit in accordance with agreed upon planning in the scope that was agreed upon during the planning phase with the County Board of Trustees. And we did perform a risk-based audit approach, which focuses on areas that we perceive as auditors to be of elevated risk, and you know, more subject to misstatement in the financial statements. Those areas include estimates, in some cases where you know, the areas of the financial statements that are not quite so black and white, that may involve management's time to estimate, and those are areas like the allowances on accounts receivable, patient accounts receivable. You probably know what the authority bills for a charge is not what they're collect most of the time, and so they spend a fair amount of time estimating those types of amounts. Other estimates include cost report settlements, professional liability reserves, and then more relative to the last couple of years, time in recognition of the provider relief funds that came through. So as far as the 2021 audit highlights, you know, it's, I think you'd have to, I'd have to start with COVID. When you look at that, that's a theme, that was a theme in fiscal year 2020, it was a theme again in fiscal 2021, and the impact on the operations. And you know, the authority as a governmental entity is required to recognize those provider relief funds as non-operating income, though the impact of COVID on operations was clearly felt in operations. And so it's a little bit of a mismatch in terms of how those funds are reported, so I think it's important to take that into account when looking at the financial statements and the statement of changes in revenues, expenses, and changes in net position. The one thing I will say is, you know, it's worth noting that this year was the first year, I think in the last three or four years, that the authority, you know, recognized an income from operations, you know, as opposed to a loss, and they had income of operations of over $5.6 million in the current year. And that's before provider relief funds, of course, that were recognized down below operations and non-operating income. So definitely a year of significant improvement in operations, the revenues, patient revenues increased almost 15%, and that was driven by improvements in the revenue cycle that management has been focused on, as well as growth in volumes relative to fiscal year 2020. And at the same time, they were able to contain operating expenses, and that's not, that's not easy in this environment. We've seen inflation in lots of areas, certainly COVID supplies are expensive, and salaries and contract labor have been, you know, big challenges for a lot of hospital systems across the state. The last thing I'll point out from a highlight standpoint, I guess, is just, you know, the communication with HUD. So I think you know that HUD is very involved with the authority as they ensure the mortgage that the hospital has. And in previous years, you know, when the hospital was reporting losses, there were some, a little more oversight that was involved, but I think in the last couple of years in particular, you know, management has been in regular contact with HUD, they've remained in compliance this past year with all the covenants. And so, you know, it seems like there are no issues based on our conversations with HUD and the improvement there. So that's probably the audit highlights in a nutshell, and I'll pause there to answer any questions or hear any comments.
I know, I'm really pleased with the plus margin for the hospital since the hospital had struggled with reimbursement from insurance and Medicare and Medicaid before. Can you just touch on what the hospital actually pays out in charity and care or non-collectable funds? Because a lot of people don't realize that when somebody goes to Onslow, they have to, you know, have no choice, they have to treat them. And there's a lot of people that go there because of that, and the hospital has to absorb that some way.
That's right, yeah, I think that's a great, a great comment, and it comes in light of a recent report from the State Treasurer you may have seen, that was really challenging a lot of hospitals and health systems, you know, for the amount of charity care they're providing. I think the authority has a pretty good leg to stand on there. You know, the last couple of years, 19 and 20, you know, between 12 and 13% of gross revenues were uncompensated care, and that's a combination of charity care and bad debt. In 2021, it was around 11% where that was the case, we saw a little bit of a decrease, but still, I think, you know, we work with a lot of hospitals across the state and we see that vary. I've seen it as low as 4% to 5%, and I've seen it as high as 15% or 16%. So I think that the authority is in a pretty good range, at least relative to a lot of hospitals, though it's, you know, clearly the payer mix is drives that.
Do you have a dollar amount for that?
Ah, that's a good question, let me see here, I think we do, let me see if I can, give me just a second. I think we've got that disclosed in here. Let's see here. Well, that's, nope, that's the wrong one, give me, sorry.
Commissioner Bright, who's our CFO.
Okay.
From a cost perspective, pure charity care costs in 2021, $5.4 million. That's almost 4% of all our total operating costs for the year. And for the year previous to that, it was $6.4 million, which is almost four and a half, a little over four and a half percent of all total operating costs.
Carl, what about uncompensated care, that's what I'm hearing.
I don't have those figures in total, that was just pure charity care.
That's okay, I just, there's so much that people does in an organization like the hospital, or an organization that runs business, that's quite a hit for businesses to pay out that kind of money, or not collect that amount of money and still stay in business and still make a profit. So you gotta be doing something right, I applaud you for that, thank you.
That's why we're here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that I'm excited to see positive operating income after all the years that we struggled with negatives in that bracket. And I wanted to mention, if you would, cash flow. Several years ago, we were very concerned about the days of cash on hand, and what does that look like now?
Yeah, the cash flows have improved, and by the way, I just found the number you're probably looking for in Note 12, but charity provided established billing rates and the provision was in excess of $51 million for fiscal year 2021. So that's outlined in Note 12, and that's a big number, there's no question. So as far as the cash flows go, yeah, I think that's a great point. So you know, fortunately, at least the last couple of years, the authority has been able to generate positive cash flows from operations, and you know, if you back out depreciation expense, for example, that's a non-cash expense. But for fiscal year 21, you know, the authority generated almost $10 million from operations, and that includes payments coming in from patients and third-party payers, but that's after paying your employees and after paying your vendors and your operating costs, before debt service and, you know, capital needs.
Thank you.
Any further, any further questions? That's it from the Board.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The next item is Item B, proclamation. I'll turn that over to Ms. Griffin to read that into the record.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We do have a proclamation this evening recognizing Black History Month, and I'm going to read this into the record for everyone to hear, and then following me reading this in, Commissioner Mark Price will be presenting this to the members of our Community Advisory Council. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation, Black History Month 2022. Whereas in 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of Black history throughout our American experience, which goes back thousands of years and includes some of the greatest, most advanced, and innovative societies in our history that we can all draw inspiration from. And whereas each February, we pause to reflect on the contributions of the African-American community to our national and local identity, and Black History Month gives us an opportunity to learn more about this important part of our nation's story. And whereas as a result of their determination, hard work, and perseverance, African-Americans have made valuable and lasting contributions to the County of Onslow and our state, achieving exceptional success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, and the arts. And whereas we join with all Americans in celebrating our diverse heritage and culture, and our continuing efforts to protect democracy for all people, and recognizing the vital achievements of our local African-American residents. And whereas during Black History Month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on past successes and challenges of African-Americans, and look to the future to continue to improve society, so that we live up to the ideals of freedom, equality, and justice. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners acknowledges February 2022 as Black History Month in Onslow County, presented this 21st day of February 2022 by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. And if the members of the Community Advisory Council would like to step up to the microphone, Commissioner Mark Price will present the proclamation.
It's quite an honor to present this proclamation this evening, to remember the importance of Black History Month. I tend to see Black history as a thread woven throughout the fabric of the American story, not just in isolation in one month, but it is important to take that month and set aside and kind of focus, though. But Black history is a part of American history from going all the way back to our initial founding, to those who first arrived in Jamestown. You also had some African-Americans there as well, who came in as indentured servants. You've got Crispus Attucks in the American Revolution, you've got the activity of Black soldiers there. You've got the story of rebellions of Nat Turner in 1831 in Virginia. You've got Frederick Douglass leading the abolition movement, leading up to the Civil War. You've got the Reconstruction era of a number of Black leaders, Hiram Revels, Blanche K. Bruce, all of those guys who served in the United States Senate, for example. And I could go on and on, Jackie Robinson, Jesse Owens at 1936 Olympic Games in Berlin, showing that that master race theory was bogus. Yeah, all of these individuals played an important role, and so it's an honor for me to present this proclamation to our Community Advisory Group. Thank you.
Would one of you guys like to speak? Or several of you?
Certainly on behalf of the Advisory Committee, my colleagues, Ms. Hernandez, Mr. Deontay, and Bishop Zinnerman, and in her absence, the Reverend Dr. Avi Ciceron. As Commissioner Price has already indicated, our efforts are woven into the tapestry of this nation. And to just set aside one month, of course, we understand the significance, but we realize those contributions extend over a lifetime and throughout each and every day that we are here. So on behalf of all of those who have gone before me, those who shall continue to carry on the initiatives that we're in, we can continue to grow as one united society, propelling each other to do the greater good of humanity, for the betterment of humanity. We say thank you so much to the leadership of Onslow County for this recognition, and we just continue to support you and ask, and continue to ask that you support those endeavors that promote unity within the community. Thank you.
What a fitting presentation, Mark Price, it just came up that he was the one that's in line to give presentations and proclamation, and not only does Mark do a good presentation, but Mark is a history, retired history teacher, he knows all about the history, and Lord knows, he knows a lot about sports, so he knows the contribution that's being put forward with everybody, and what a fitting presentation.
Yes.
I applaud you, and I applaud Reverend Churchwell, I applaud Bishop Zinnerman for working with us to try to resolve issues that come up, and we have made a lot of progress, long way to go, but still, we thank you for being here to accept that tonight. Any further? Okay, we'll move on now with the public hearing. This is public hearing, I don't think we vote on this, but we have it so we can at least hear it as part of the process.
That's correct. We've got four public hearings this evening, and this first one is not yet up for vote, it is simply a public hearing to provide information to the public and to allow an opportunity for the public to become involved in this decision. It will be considered by the Board at our next meeting for decision, and then the next three are going to be considered this evening. This first public hearing is about a franchise ordinance for American ambulance service, and I'm going to call up for the staff background Jason Jones, who is our EMS Division Head.
Good evening Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. Onslow County EMS has received the franchise request from American ambulance service to provide scheduled non-emergency transports within Onslow County. Under North Carolina rule, EMS is regulated at the county level, so they had to apply to the EMS system. We reviewed their application and recommended favorably that they proceed to Board of Commissioner approval. This is the first public hearing as part of our ambulance franchise to grant them permission to operate a non-emergent EMS transport service within Onslow County. Ms. Griffin, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you so much, Jason, and this is non-emergent transports only, so what this company would do if permitted to have a franchise in Onslow County is actually transfer patients from the hospital to another hospital, provide services like that that do not infringe or get involved in our 911 emergent transport. So that's what this is about, and our peer review committee has reviewed this franchise request and recommended a favorable consideration. At this time, I will open the public hearing. And at this time, no one has signed up to speak about promoting American ambulance service and giving them this franchise ordinance. I see no one approaching. At this time, I will close the public hearing, and we are finished now with this item unless the Board of Commissioners has any questions for Mr. Jones.
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to applaud this company for creating that service here. We need, we desperately need ambulance service now, and sometimes we have to do non-emergency transports from what I'm hearing, so this will fill in some of the gaps, and hopefully we can move this process along and streamline it as much as we can from now on out. Other than that, that's all the comments I have about it.
Okay, I'll be happy now to move on to our next public hearing. This is for PREZ-2021-00009 McDowell rezoning request, and I will call on our Planning and Development Director, Ms. Jessie Rue, to give the staff background and recommendation.
Thank you so much. Good evening Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. We have three rezoning requests this evening. The first is the McDowell rezoning. This request is to rezone property from RA to R15. It was submitted by Strong Rock Engineering on behalf of Mr. McDowell. This is on the south side of Rocky Run Road, and it totals 27.87 acres. Currently, the property is undeveloped with access to Onwassa Water and Onwassa Sewer located in the adjacent development in the vicinity. Fire serviced by Piney Green, and Rocky Run's latest AADT is 3,400, which is below capacity. The hatched area in green is what's currently zoned RA and up for potential rezoning. You can see around here, we have R10, which is a denser zoning district than the requested R15, and we also have a great deal of R15 in the area. So when we evaluate a request like this, we really look at this as infill development. Our RA district, in a residential sense, allows two units per acre, and the proposed rezoning would allow three to five units per acre depending on the process used for subdivision in the future. Our future land use plan has this as medium density residential, this whole area, and that category does support this development at moderate density, and due to that, it's found to be reasonable and in the public interest. It's supported by our comp plan policies 19, 20, 23, and 30. This did receive a unanimous recommendation from the Planning Board on February 3rd, and there were no comments against this rezoning request. That concludes the staff report on this one.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rue. At this time, I will open the public hearing for PREZ-2021-00009, the McDowell rezoning request. We do have one citizen who has signed up to speak about this rezoning this evening. I would now call up to the podium for up to five minutes of comment, Ms. Diana Davis of 1533 Riggs Road, and please do reiterate your name and your address as you begin your comments, ma'am.
Good evening, gentlemen, my name's Diana Davis, I live at 1533 Riggs Road, but I'm on the Maysville side of Riggs Road. I grew up in the Grants Creek community, which is right off Old 30, which is in the vicinity of Rocky Run Road. Basically, my concern is more about the rezoning than the White Oak District as it is. Our schools, three out of five are over 50 years old. How is this rezoning going to affect the population of our schools? They're already kind of close to capacity. Silverdale, Morton, Hunter Street Elementary, all feed into Hunter Street Middle, which feeds into White Oak High School. So my concern is, are we going to be able to, can our schools meet this? Especially since you're also looking at a second development in the White Oak Township. This part is covered by Piney Green Fire Department, but as you go to the other side, the White Oak Fire Department shut down, it was actually absorbed by Hubert, so we're already, sorry, I hate public speaking. It's just, you're going to constantly rezone White Oak, but are you going to invest in White Oak? Our fire departments have shut down, there is no ambulance station on our side of town. As I said earlier, our schools are old, so our kids don't have a ballpark. So as we continue to grow, as the farmland settle off, I'm sure many more people will come in and ask to be rezoned from rural agriculture to residential. It's time, are you going to invest in us? That's all, my only question. So, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That is our only speaker for this public hearing. Thank you so much, Ms. Davis, for coming out. At this time, I will close the public hearing, and the item is now available for Commissioner discussion and consideration.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board or for Ms. Rue?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I am concerned with the infrastructure that we need out there. I think we're meeting in a few weeks with the school board to talk about the need for schools. I think road issues would be addressed in the planning process for any subdivision, and we're certainly working hard to provide fire and EMS service, so that'd be my comment.
I just think that, I think Ms. Davis should bring up some good points in reference to the expansion, you have residential area that are coming up, we've got old schools now, and then we're pushing the population limit anyway for that particular school, and now we're just going to add to it, and we have to try some way to keep up with it. And I appreciate you coming out, because my standard is if there's a rezoning issue, a lot of people look at rezoning as non-consequential, but when you come out and it's important enough for you, then it makes me take notice to pay attention to what you said, and I was listening intently to what you were saying, and you had some very, very valid points. So I'll just give you that.
Ms. Griffin, don't we have an EMS located on Piney Green that parks in that area, but aren't we going to build, looking to build a shelter for them to park under? Isn't that one of our points of focus this budget year?
That is correct. Commissioner Price, one of the EMS regional stations that we discussed, actually at the workshop Monday, that the Board of Commissioners has put as a priority, is one of the stations out at Piney Green. And currently, we do have an ambulance that is located out there, but most of the time they have to sit at the gas station and just run the engine for the entire 12-hour shifts that they're on. So we do have it covered with ambulance service, but hopefully that will further improve, and we will have a regional location where Sheriff's deputies can stop in, social workers would have a desk that they Social workers would have a desk that they could stop in to work at. And it would have the EMS bay that, that would be provided. Yes, sir.
I think the schools, when we meet with them, some of they're looking at is the new elementary school in that area with Silverdale, Morton, Hunter's Creek Elementary. And then the discussion and work on the potential new elementary school out there. So definitely an area that is growing and investing in that area is going to be important for folks that are coming to Onslow County. So I appreciate Ms. Davis coming out and sharing those concerns as that area just continues, continues to grow.
Don't we have, we have three schools in that area too, don't we? Silverdale, Morton Elementary, and Hunter's Creek? Don't we have three schools within?
Yes.
Maybe?
Three elementary schools, and then you have Hunter's Creek Middle, and then White Oak High.
Would you like for Mr. Meyer to come up and answer that question?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer is from the Board of Education, Ms. Davis, so maybe he could answer those questions. We, we as Commissioners, we pay for the schools and we, we pay for them to be built, but we don't place them or we don't have really any authority about where they're located. So we try to locate them. The school tries to locate them, you know, where the population is. So if there's a population movement, the schools always address that with redistricting or either with a school. But I'll, I'll leave that in your wheelhouse. So that's your area.
No, I'm not very good at public speaking. I'm going to do my best.
You do a very good job.
But basically, what we're talking about in that area, what we're talking about, the, in that area right there, the northeast section, or where you're impacting Morton Elementary, you're impacting Silverdale Elementary, you're impacting somewhat Hunter's Creek Elementary. But there's two other areas that you need to be aware of as well. One is Swansboro Elementary and Queens Creek Elementary. Because both of them, in the past, have actually taken over a lot of this, a lot of the district, I mean, a lot of the territory up in that area because there wasn't enough space. For example, a good example of that would be Swansboro Elementary goes all the way up to Smith Road. The district first, Swansboro Elementary all the way up to Smith Road. And what's important to know about that, that's where Silverdale is, just on the other side of the road. So we have overcrowding in five schools, not just one school in that area.
I got a question. So just based on what you're telling me, so we're doing 27 acres, which means it's a new housing development, correct? Is that what I'm hearing? Residential, turning into residential? It could be single-family units, multi, you know, multi-people units, et cetera. Am I correct? Yes. Okay, so what that means, there's going to be more influx of kids, correct?
We, I mean, we always, we're excited to have more kids coming into the school system. And so we're anxious to see that happen. But at the same time, one thing that we do know that is important for everybody to know that, on average, we do a study on this with NC State and ORED or ITRE Department, Operational Research and Education Laboratories. And every year, we do a study. And what we see approximately is approximately for single-family units throughout the whole county, not one particular area or another, but throughout the whole county, the average is .46 student, student-age students. I mean, I mean, grade-level students in that, in that single-family unit. So if you had a unit of 1,000, a development of 1,000 units, then you're talking about 460 students, give or take. Now, that's the average across the county. Some may be a little bit more, some may be a little less. Multifamily units are a lot less than that. Usually, that's younger demographics. And so we don't see as many students in the, in the multifamily units. But single-family units, about .46 students per, per unit. And one thing we can't, and Mr. Nap, one thing we can't say though is, we don't know if those students are coming from another location in the county or if they're coming from outside the county and increasing the overall student population. We do know that over, over the last 30 years, we've seen an average growth of 300-plus students a year. And I think last year, we saw huge growth in it. But we, but that's, you have to factor in also that we had COVID-19 in that process too. But we've seen close to 900 students last year come into the county.
And, and the first elementary school that you've listed as a priority would be in the Silverdale?
That's right.
Debbie area to help relieve some of this, correct?
That's right.
Any further?
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Do we have a note? Six to one. Next item.
Again, we're going to have Ms. Jessie Rue provide some background for the UZEL rezoning request, which is P R E Z two zero two one dash zero zero one zero.
Thank you. Our next rezoning request this evening is the UZEL rezoning request. Another request to go from RA to R15. Our applicant is Beaver Creek Investors, as they are also the owners. And this is on both sides of UZEL Road, near the intersection with Riggs Road. And this is for a total of 229.42 acres. Currently, there's a single-family home on site. The remainder of the property is agricultural or forested land. There's Anwassa water lines available for development in this area. At the current time, wastewater would be septic, served by Hubert Fire District. And the traffic counts on Riggs Road are below capacity at the last study. This area is, the hatched area is the rezoning request. However, you'll, I'll call to your attention out here, we have R E M, which is up to 10 units an acre across the road here. And we also have R20 and R15 developments. This was processed, there's three requests, I'll point out. One of these parcels was approved to be changed in our 160D mapping update. And it was on the list, and it was approved on the list. However, it never got transferred to the mapping when GIS took that list and put it on the maps. So when we went to look at this, we identified that. And staff did process this at your request complimentary to fix that mapping error from the 160D transfer. RA again is up to two units per acre when we're discussing residential development or agricultural uses. And R15, again, is typically three units per acre with a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. And this is a residential district. Our future land use plan has this at rural residential, this whole area. And so this category is supported by the zoning district being R15. We will point out that typically, R15 in a district like this would require for support central sewer. But there's others, properties in the area that have already been rezoned, R15 and R20. And that's typically what we go to look at, to look at the growth, growth trends in the area, acknowledging that our land use plan is about to start an update in July. So this is supported by the comp plan policies 20 and 30. And the planning board did unanimously recommend this rezoning request. And there were no citizens present at the meeting speaking against it. That concludes the staff report on this request.
Thank you, Ms. Rue. At this time, I will open the hearing for P R E Z dash two zero two one dash zero 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 one zero. And we do have two individuals who have signed up for the public hearing. I believe one is the applicant. I will offer to have Mr. John Pierce, if he would like to speak, on behalf of the applicants.
John Pierce, 405 Johnson Boulevard. I'd like to point out a couple of things. The UZEL Road is going to take some pretty serious improvement to meet the DOT requirements. It currently is a DOT road, but it doesn't meet current requirements. And we will be improving it to DOT standards. In other words, we're going to pave it and straighten out some of the curves. But at any rate, and also, we're going to add increase the water line. And one other thing I want to point out is, in these tracks, I would anticipate somewhere in the range, we probably won't be developing over a total of 100 lots, even though it's 229 acres, because there is a lot of it. It's wetlands on both tracks, and certainly, we can't develop that. And after the public hearing, if there's any questions, I'll try to address it. And I do appreciate the board. It was an oversight because two of these parcels, which was, was one closing, was supposed to have been on the, in the previous meeting, but it just was an oversight and got left out. And I'll be here to answer any questions that Commissioners may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. We also have Mr. George Markle of 654 Riggs Road, who has signed up to speak. Mr. Markle, will you approach the podium, please?
Good evening, gentlemen. I kind of am going to go ahead and reiterate some of the concerns as the person who was up here for the last rezoning committee. My wife has taught at both Silverdale and Queens Creek, and my children attended. My son left 5th grade in a class of 35 students. I consider that a failure of the educational part because how could he successfully learn when that teacher, in no way possible, could have got everything across? And it shows through our state testing. Next, I would also like to say, when I purchased two lots across the street, we were RA. And whatever mistake may have happened to where we did not know what was going on across the street when I initially made my investment, how was I to know when I was doing my research that this was even in the works? For any type of redistricting, for possibly, well, 687 houses across the street from me? None of that was made light. I did all my research, and I did everything I was properly supposed to do. I also know during Florence, the road down the way washed out. So where was the mitigation plan for all the drainage for these houses? Because again, I own property across the street. Who is going to take account for that if my property floods out because we decided to put 600 houses across the street? Again, I understand building and expanding is necessary. I don't understand why we're trying to continuously compact more houses without the plan to help our own children. I understand most people on the board are older and children might not be suffering the consequences of what we're currently doing. But they are suffering. It's evident. I mean, and if you can't see the evidence, I don't know how else to present it. He came up here and spoke from the board and said, "This is a problem." And we're continuously doing it over and over again without actually putting a solution in place before we make these improvements. The big thing was the infrastructure, the fire department. I hear them all the time, my drainage issues, because I watch it. The county actually put a drain on one of my properties and runs water through. So where are we, like, are we, I'm now supposed to account for 600 other properties going through that same drain? None of this has been discussed. Again, I did my due diligence with the county, going in, doing everything I was supposed to do when I made my investment in this county. I own several other properties in the county because I thought the county was moving in the right direction of actually helping people. But if there's going to be issues to where things may not have been zoned, or things that didn't get changed in time when they were supposed to, and those people that make the investment, just because they're not the big, major company who gives you the flashy sign, well, we're going to repave a road. Well, congratulations, I appreciate that. But that doesn't help my daughter, who again, is 30, some kids in a class. It doesn't help the guy whose road gets washed out because we didn't develop the infrastructure for 600 houses, sorry, to run drainage across the street like we're currently doing, so it washes out. I know a new house that's currently building, built right across the street from what they're proposing, next to a pond. I guarantee you, you can mark my words, with this and a hurricane, those people will go ahead and get flooded out and have to move somewhere else. And those are other people, possibly military families, who we say we're here to support, going to get flooded out because we didn't do the infrastructure responsibilities that we should. Gentlemen, I appreciate your time. But I feel, oh, and I was not here at the first meeting because again, I recently moved. And I never got any notice to this. The only reason I found out about this is because I was walking my dog, and there was a sign on the street being run over by multiple cars. Is the only reason I'm even here tonight. And I asked most of my neighbors who are elderly, or they would have been here as well. We say, we tell people, but let's be honest here. Telling me the day of is when I got the letter to be here for the last meeting. And someone who invested in this county, I coach. I had responsibilities to be somewhere without any way to make any type of plan. Gentlemen, I appreciate your time. I just, I really want everything to be considered because you're going to flood people. I guarantee you, that's not being considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else?
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Markle. And at this time, I will close the public hearing. And now the item is available for Commissioner consideration.
I'm going to make an emotion to approve it, but I'd like to talk to John some more.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'd like to talk to you, John. I believe I heard you say it was only going to be 100 units because of all the wetlands.
That's correct.
And then you're going to fix the road and whatnot. And I know that you do a lot of due diligence when you do these properties because you've been doing it for many, many years. And anything you could add?
Yes, sir. And we will be required, we'll get a stormwater permit. And we're also required to develop under a low-density permit and try to constrain waters from increasing the amount and the velocity. We will have it where it wouldn't be increasing the velocity that it was prior to development. Pre-development, post-development should be equaled out. And I know years ago, developers didn't have, wasn't required that. But we, we are required to get a stormwater permit and develop under those guidelines, as well as a erosion control permit.
Of the 229 acre, acres, how, how many acres did you say was undeveloped, undevelopable because of the wetlands?
Well, I've done some work with the soils, and most we can get on both tracks would be about 100 lots, to maybe 105, somewhere in that range.
So 105 lots. Each, each lot is what, a half acre, quarter acre wide?
Yes, sir. It's probably, I would say there's probably a total of, probably 120 acres we can't develop on it. There'll be large lots, the ones we do have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions?
There was a, the person that spoke earlier mentioned about 600 homes is...
That's not, we're not developing 600 homes.
Okay. No.
Mr. Chairman, I think it was, that, that would be the capacity if there were no wetlands out there, I think is what the Speaker was referring to.
I was saying, well, if you're rezoning for the residential, that's how many per acre you would fit. So if they was maximizing it out, how many houses they would actually fit per acre? Otherwise, I don't understand why they would need to rezonate if they're only trying to fit 100 houses.
I can explain that because some of the areas, you, we're going to be able to be non-wetlands. We will be able to utilize 15,000 square feet to somewhere in that range of 17 versus everyone being 20,000 square feet. So that's the reason why we wouldn't need to rezonate.
Well, the county don't have any role in engineering drainage, do we? I mean, that's not something we can do. Even, even if that is a problem, that's nothing that we can do.[1630.54] that we can do. We, that's not part of what we do to start with, is it?
That's right. This, the state will issue a stormwater permit, so that's all done through the state, not the county.
So that, that's something that you addressed?
Yes, sir. Understate, I'd have state approvals for both of them.
Stormwater issues?
Stormwater and erosion control, yes, sir.
Okay. That's all my questions. We have a motion and a second. Any further? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We will move on to the next one.
Our final hearing this evening is for P R E Z dash 2022 dash 00002146 Northwest Corridor Boulevard rezoning request, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Jessie Rue for the background.
I'm switching it up with this one. This rezoning request is to go from highway business to office and institutional. Our applicant is Onslow County, and the property owner in this case is Onslow County. Our location of this 11.67 acres is on the south side here of Northwest Corridor Boulevard, right across from our intersection with Ormond Barbie Court. Currently, the property is cleared and developed. We have Onwassa water and wastewater available for development in this location. Roadstown Volunteer provides the fire service. And post-improvements for Richlands Highway out here, the, the capacity will be about 62,800. Here's our zoning map. We've got a lot of office and institutional right here in the area already. The hatched area outlined in red is the subject parcel. There's no minimum lot size in either of the zoning districts, the current one or the proposed one. Office and institutional zoning districts limits a little bit more of what you can do as far as intensity over the highway business. This rezoning request is supported by our future land use plan and map in our comprehensive plan. It's area-wide commercial activity center. Both zoning districts are appropriate in that classification. So the comp plan and the map both support this rezoning request, and it was found by the planning board to be reasonable in, in the public interest and supported by policies 33, 36, 37, and 39 in our comprehensive plan. It was unanimously recommended for approval on February 3rd by our planning board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rue. At this time, I will open the public hearing. No citizens have signed up to speak at this public hearing. I will now close the public hearing for P R E Z dash 2022 dash 00002146 Northwest Corridor Boulevard, and it is now available for Commissioner consideration.
Motion to approve. Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on with land acquisition, item number six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to introduce this item, but we will also, we have, of course, he's already spoken, and our, in our audience, Mr. Meyer is available from Onslow County Schools to answer any questions. This regards to land acquisition that the school board would like to move forward with using funds that have already been identified, and they are not asking for more funds from Onslow County Government. In November 2021, Onslow County Board of Education was given the opportunity to purchase 11.94 acres of undeveloped land adjacent to Jacksonville High School. The address for the property is 1819 Gum Branch Road in Jacksonville. The current owner of the property is Wajah Brunelli. On December 15th, 2021, the Board of Education directed their staff to pursue an option to purchase the property for $500,000. It was finalized December 23rd, 2021. For $500,000 contingent upon due diligence, BOE approval, and Onslow County Commissioners' approval, the due diligence has now been performed. There were no adverse findings. And on February 1st, 2022, at the regular meeting of the Board of Education, they unanimously voted to purchase this property using funds already available from the Board of Education capital outlay fund balance in the amount of $500,000. It is contingent on the approval of the Onslow County Commissioners in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 115C dash 426F. There are no additional funds being requested from us for this purchase, and the reason why they would like to buy this is because Jacksonville High School has the smallest amount of acreage for any high school in Onslow County and has the largest student population. They believe this acreage will provide opportunities to improve traffic flow, recommended by NCDOT, increase parking spaces, and potentially improve athletic programs in the future. At this time, I respectfully request that this Board of Commissioners approve the Board of Education's purchase of the property using funds from their own capital outlay fund balance in the amount of $500,000.
Mr. Chairman, before you go any farther, my home is adjacent to this property, and I believe that this purchase may directly impact me financially, so I would ask that the board allow me to be recused from this vote?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion. Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You are excused.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion on the property?
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. I'm not going to ask you to come up, Steve, but I would say that we've had so many kids that because of the parking situation, they're parking across Henderson Drive, and even though they put safety devices in to protect the pedestrians, there's still kids that's being hit that's parking over there and having to walk across four lanes of highway and a turning lane. And that's one reason for this land purchase is to give more parking and more use for expanding the property. Is that, am I correct in saying that?
Yes, sir. As you are correct. One of the things we've done for the last couple of years is work with Department of Transportation, and they have recognized that we have constraints on the property itself, and has asked, have asked us to do different things, but because the, because the footprint of the property has been very difficult to do it. We also have worked with the city, and as you mentioned, they put the new HOX, the HOX Signal System in over across from Henderson, and helps, that's helped out some, but we still have people, still have parents and students and community parking over in the parking lot across the road, across Henderson, to get to Jacksonville High School. So that's one of the things we want to be concerned about as well. We also know that in the future, there may be some athletic programs that we may have an opportunity to look at, and this may be a good opportunity to move some athletic fields over there while we increase parking in some of the other areas. So we have lots of options, and we know it's going to be good for the students. It's going to be a safer, gives us additional opportunities to improve safety on the campus. And at this point in time, it was an opportunity that came up, and we thought it was the best thing to do at this point in time.
Okay, any further?
It's a, it's a great opportunity for the situation Jacksonville High School's in. I think you said it in this, is the largest population of high schools in the county with the smallest acreage there, and they are very compact with their athletic facilities. I think their band and their football program actually practice right by the school, and it's going to create lots of, like you said, opportunity for enhancement of the school.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hearing no further. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Surplus equipment, item B.
Good evening, Commissioners. The airport has a 2000 E1 Titan R fire truck that has been recently, recently replaced with a new truck funded by an FAA grant. The 2000 E1 was originally funded by the FAA and has exceeded its useful life and is no longer needed. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute 160A, Article 12, any individual piece of surplus property with an estimated value of 30,000 or more must be declared surplus by the board. If declared surplus, the airport staff will work with the purchasing department to sell the item by electronic auction. After the sale is conducted, the item will be removed from the county's asset list. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners declare the apparatus as surplus, and it approved, authorized that to conduct the sale using the electronic auction method.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Police agreement for Pluris Webb Creek LLC. Ben Warner, Assistant County Manager, will present that item.
All right. Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman and Commissioners. The county received an offer from Pluris Webb Creek LLC to enter into a 10-year lease agreement for a one-acre parcel they own off of Sand Ridge Road adjacent to the Fox Trace neighborhood. And this parcel was recently developed as a neighborhood park. It contains playground equipment, exercise equipment, a small pavilion, and a parking lot. And the county staff have gone out, evaluated the equipment, determined everything is commercial-grade and suitable for use as a county park. And so the terms of the agreement would be for 10 years, for a total amount of $10 for the term of the lease agreement, or $1 per year for rent. And at the conclusion of the 10-year lease, the county would have the option of purchasing the property and all equipment for the sum of $1. And so it's respectfully requested that the Commissioners approve the lease agreement and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county.
Hear a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion? I will say that if anybody hadn't seen that park, it's state-of-the-art. Just go out and take a look at it. It was given to us because the developer that built the Webb Creek plant had some lots that he couldn't use when he built the new wastewater treatment plant for Webb Creek. Got a lot of people there out of, out of jeopardy with their systems failing. There were some people that lived out there that had septic systems and sewer systems that they couldn't get their loan approved on because the system was failing. He come in, redeveloped that plant, and built those folks a park with leftover land. It's beautiful, and if you ever get a chance to go out there, I mean, it's brand-new, state-of-the-art, and he wanted to donate that to the people in the community. So I think from looking at the situation that happened in New Bern where somebody tried to, the town had voted to build a hotel on, on parkland, parkland is becoming pretty hard to get now, so when we get somebody wanting to give us a park that's already developed, I don't know what the value would be of that park. I would imagine it would be considerable from what I've seen out there, but what an amazing gift that this individual company did for the people that live out there. And it's, you know, for a dollar a year, and then they give it to us after, what, 10 years? So it's a win-win.
I've also been out there, and it's really nice, but what, Tom Tillis's name is on a plaque, though, is it not, if I remember, Jack?
It's Tillis Park, I think.
I think it's called Tillis Park, if I remember the plaque that was out there.
It's a huge rock.
Yep.
Granite. Any further?
Nope. You have to pay it all up front.
I guess we, I guess we can come up with, I think we can come up with $10. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
D Home and Community Care Block Grant. Mr. Calhoun, our Senior Services Director.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman and Commissioners. Onslow County Senior Service remains as the lead agency for the Home and Community Care Block Grant Services in Onslow County. This grant is received on an annual basis from the Eastern Carolina Council Area Agency on Aging. The funding is for in-home care, adult daycare, transportation, and nutrition services. The council received notice of a grant award from the Department of Aging and Adult Services that an additional $46,301, with a county match of $5,145, has been awarded to Onslow County. This additional funding is to be used to reduce waiting lists. Currently, in-home services staff have four caseloads, and to comply with reducing the waitlist, one additional certified nursing aid physician is needed. The new grant total is 700,000, 736,907. The county match is $81,879. This match will be met within the existing senior services operational budget appropriation. No additional monies are required. There will be an increase in the block grant allocation for the next several years. I will be happy to answer any questions the board may have. At this time, I respectfully request that the board consider approval of the grant revision to the Eastern Carolina Council Area Agency on Aging, and authorize the chairman of the board to execute the contract revision documents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun. Physical year 2022 Audit Contract Engagement Letter.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman and Commissioners. We have recently sent out a request for proposal for our auditing services, and we are presenting to you the contract for the lowest and most responsible bidder, which is Martin Starnes and Associates, CPA's PA. And this would be for the audit for year ending June 30th, 2022, and they have been actively engaged in governmental auditing since 1992, and they currently provide auditing services to 25 different governmental entities in North Carolina. And for the fiscal year 2022 audit, the fee would be $89,500. And it is respectfully requested that the board consider approval of the contract and engagement letters with Martin Starnes and Associates, CPA's PA, for fiscal year 2022 audit, and authorize the chairman and myself, Amy Davis, interim finance officer, to sign the contract and engagement letters on behalf of the county. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Motion?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Discussion? Now, this audit, this is something we do every year.
Yes.
It was suggested that we only do in-house audits, and we don't do, aren't we required by statute to go outside?
Yes, we are required by the local government commission to have annual audits from an outside firm, CPA, every year. And we, they're actually due to them every year, and they review them. The LGC actually has the authority to come take over the financial management and decisions of counties, and they actually do have that control over a few of our smaller counties in North Carolina. So it is something that they monitor very closely.
And that's the law on it?
It is absolutely a law, yes.
Let's make, I just want everybody to understand, people in the audience and people at home too, watching on G10, that this audit covers every department, every single line by line.
It does. They are looking at all of our financials. They're also looking at internal controls as well.
So it's a line-by-line audit?
It is not every single line. There's numerous lines that actually overlap. So they are looking at material issues. They're looking at very important issues. We have a lot of governmental accounting standards that we have to abide by, so they are looking at all of those, and they have very specific things that they are looking for. And as far as the internal controls, they are looking, they're actually, will go out to our departments and interview them to find out their internal controls within each department.
So they, they've got the expertise that if they, they know if they see a red flag, then they can dig and, and explore those areas as much as, as they want to?
Absolutely, yes. And they do present an annual audit report to the Commissioners as well with their findings. And any findings that they have, we have to actually have a correction plan to, to make those corrections.
Ms. Davis, is this, is this the same company we've had, or is this a different company?
It is not. It is a different company. We actually had Elliott Davis last year, but they've notified us that they are no longer going to be auditing governmental agencies.
So they got out of the business?
They did, yes.
Okay, any further?
So they just go out for bid?
It did, yes. We received three responses.
Okay, and this was the lowest bid?
Yes, the lowest responsible bidder.
It's kind of good for us, though, because it gets a different set of eyes on our internal structure.
Absolutely. It's a whole auditing team, actually, that will come in from the outside and audit.
Well, thank you, Ms. Davis. Any further? All in favor of the motion, do we have a motion?
Yep.
We have a motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We've had so many motions and seconds, I've lost in the...
Lost in the motions.
In the motion, and the motion to, find a motion. So we in a locomotion now. Item seven, appointments.
Did you say locomotion?
That's what I think he said.
That's what he said, locomotion.
That's back in the 70s, I think, Jack.
Budget amendments, Mr. Chairman. Your next one.
Yes, the next one as well. So both of these budget amendments are for grants that were approved during our last meeting. One is for the body worn cameras, and the other one is for the Co-Stop grant. And it's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve these budget amendments.
So moved.
Second. Hearing, any other, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you.
Appointments, that of Planning Board for Swansboro Extraterritorial Jurisdiction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Our final item tonight is an appointment to the Swansboro Planning Board. The town of Swansboro has requested specifically that the Board of Commissioners consider appointment of Ms. Sherry Hancock on the Swansboro Planning Board, serving as the Extraterritorial Jurisdiction representative for a three-year term, which would be expiring January 31st, 2025. Ms. Hancock did express an interest in serving. She provided a citizen participation application. This is on file and has been certified by the Clerk's Office. At this time, I respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners consider appointment of Ms. Sherry Hancock for a three-year term expiring on January 31st, 2025.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are now at item eight, consent agenda. We didn't move anything from the front, so we'll move on to Ms. Griffin's comment, County Manager.
Thank you so much, Chairman, Breit and Commissioners, and do not, please don't make me laugh with the locomotion of the motions tonight. So I did want to let the public know, all of you already know, we had our first budget workshop of the season last Monday. These are lengthy workshops. It does take some time during the day. Many of you have to get off work to come to these, and it really shows your commitment to the county. County staff are also working diligently already on the upcoming fiscal year's budget. This is a lengthy process. Our department heads and division heads have inputted their requests, and our finance office is compiling, along with human resources. We will be going through these as a budget team line by line and presenting to you our proposed budget. our proposed budget. The state of North Carolina requires that Onslow County, as all of the counties in North Carolina, pass a balanced budget by the end of June. That is legally required, unlike our federal government and other government agencies. We're very proud of the fact that we always live within our means at Onslow County Government. At our Board of Commissioners workshop last Monday, this board set an excellent list of goals and priorities for this year, for us to shoot for as we form our budget. I'm going to share those with the public. The first, invest in the safety of Onslow County residents by providing the necessary resources to support public health, public safety, and the general welfare of the community. The second, pursue a dedicated funding source for our volunteer fire departments. The third, maintain a quality workforce and recruit and hire top talent by ensuring or advertising recruitment efforts effectively. Support current employees' professional development with training and growth opportunities. Our fourth one, do not raise the property tax rate. Our fifth one, enhance the quality of life for Onslow County residents by investing in quality educational facilities, recreational opportunities, and cultural resources. And the final one, develop a plan that establishes a vision, strategy, funding mechanism, and desired outcomes and expectations for the development of Burton Park and other county-owned properties. We encourage the public to get involved. We do have a copy of our current fiscal year budget that is on our website. On the first page, there's a button right as you pull up the Onslow County Government webpage. You can look at last year's budget. It's about a 900-page document that we put on the website, and our proposed budget will be out no later than May. As soon as the Board of Commissioners gets this, we also make that copy available to the public. We also encourage any comments for the budget process to the email budgetcomments@onslowcountync.gov if anybody would like to send any other comments or input as a citizen. I also want to reiterate to the public that our total for mandated services, so the amount of our budget that is absolutely required by the state of North Carolina, last year it was 80.5%, almost 81%. And we will see this year, as the legislative session goes on, if that climbs. It usually climbs a little bit each year, but about 81% of our budget is spent on mandated items that we have to do. Other than that, that's all I have, unless any of you have questions. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. We'll move on with Commissioner comments, and as usual, I'll start with Commissioner Scott.
Well, I'm always the first one now, so what's going on with that?
We put you first one in the chute.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's been a long, a long weekend. I've got a lot, we've got a lot of things done and accomplished. Going through the budget season, I'm ready for it and looking forward to looking at some numbers. Deferred maintenance, I'm going to be very seriously looking, looking at it across, boy, now across the county. There's a lot going on, a lot of budget to look at, and I'm looking forward to doing it, and I thank you for the opportunity to serve, and good night.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Griffin, for sharing with the public those six goals that we outlined at the workshop, and so we know where we're headed and what we're striving for. And along the way, I think we faced some challenges, but also some opportunities. One of those challenges is we're going to have to devote $425,000 more to retirement, according to the state of North Carolina. They mandate that. We are going to have to increase our spending with the schools, according to our funding formula, but that is based on our revenue. So at least it's within reason, you know, that it's based on the actual monies that we have. So that's better than it used to be, just taking a stab in the dark where we didn't have revenues as the basis for the funding formula. Now it's based on revenue, so I think it's a much better formula in that regard. But also, there's some opportunities with our county is growing and expanding. 1,153 new residential construction permits. So the base, the tax base is expanding. That's good news, you know? So more people are paying into the system, and so that means there's more revenues there to account for the growth. And so we'll deal, that is our most important responsibility, is dealing with this budget, and so we take it seriously as we delve into these numbers and try to work it out for the best for our community. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Nat?
I can't get past a locomotion either, but I'll let it go this time, Jack.
Moving on.
It reminds me of a song, but we'll get into that later, but anyway. One of the things that I wanted to bring up, and I appreciate you sharing, being forthright and discussing the mandates, a lot of people don't realize that the state of North Carolina mandates 80.5% of our budget, okay? They mandate it, we have no control over that. So that leaves us with 19.5% of our budget to deal with, to divvy up, to look at things where we can make cuts. Every year, we go through the budget cycle, and everybody thinks, well, it's a boring part of your job, it's a boring time. It's not, because we're very attentive when we go to these meetings. First, we set out our standards and our goals that we do with Sharon, and we set out a plan for them to formulate, because each department within Onslow County has a division head, a department head. They're responsible for their department. They're responsible to report to the County Manager what they can and can't do, and what their operating expenses are. And that's the way it is in any organization, whether it be military or civilian. That's just the way things go. As Commissioners, we sit here and we're supposed to be the overseers of the budget. That's why we take it seriously as we get together with seven of us and discuss things and try to point us in the right direction. We've been fortunate this year with our revenue stream as being, what's the right word, as positive as it has been, despite the fact that we have 7% inflation going on in the country right now. And as everybody can attest, you can feel some of that, the price gouging and some things that are just more expensive. But I just want to applaud the staff, Sharon, and the department heads, putting their heads together and trying to find cuts and trying to find things that they can do without, so that we can keep our budget within our guidelines and to sustain ourselves. So I'm very proud and thankful for what you've done, and all the department heads. And as you can see, too, we do audits. Audits are professionally done by CPA company, of a team of auditors come in here, and they go through the whole budget to make sure that we are staying within our boundaries. And it's been that way ever since I became a Commissioner. It's been that way before that, and that's mandated. So when people talk about we're not being audited, we are being audited every year, every single year. And it's good this year that we have somebody else that's doing the audit, because it gives another set of eyes to look at the county, and it's not the same firm. So to me, that shows transparency as far as the audit is concerned and where we stand. The last thing I just want to talk about real quick is, a lot of people have come up to me about, and I repeat it, and I know I sound like a broken record, but COVID-19 and the numbers and things like that. People that are being admitted to the hospitals, OMH or New Hanover, where it might be, or ICU, they're being admitted not because of underlying conditions, they're being admitted because they have COVID-19 symptoms, okay? And I just want to make that clear. I have a friend right now that was admitted for COVID-19 strictly, and he had an underlying condition, and he's not in good shape, okay? So when you see the hospital reports that we put out from the county, and you see people that are in OMH or the ICU, that's not because of other, any other illness, it's because they're admitted for COVID-19. And so we try to make that as transparent as we can to the public so that you can see what we're dealing with with Onslow County. And what scares me is we have a new variant that's coming out, Omicron BA2, I think it is, or whatever it might be. I don't know anything about it, except what I hear on the news, but we still have to be, we still have to mind our Ps and Qs and be careful in what we do so that we can kind of keep this pandemic under control. And all I can urge everybody to do is do what you feel is necessary for you and your family, be safe, and take the necessary precautions. Other than that, I appreciate you guys sticking around. I know it was boring for some of the land parcel stuff, but thank you anyway, and God bless.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a long workshop Monday, and we talked about a lot of issues, but one of the things that I wanted to mention, we mentioned that we're 160, 165 vacancies in Onslow County, and I want, I want the public to be assured that every one of those positions is being examined, and the department heads and the county manager are making sure that those are necessary jobs to be filled. Just a few examples, though, I mean, I talked to Mr. Warren, and I think our building inspectors are trying to do hundreds of inspections a day. It's just ridiculous, and, you know, social service workers are overworked, and detention officers, the positions that we can't get filled. So I would just assure the public that we're looking at these positions and making sure that they are necessary for Onslow County, and trying our best to get the ones filled that need to be filled. And I also mentioned the hospital again. I'm really excited to see a positive net operating income. When I was on the hospital board up until October, we struggled over several years to bring down our expenses and increase our revenue, partnered with UNC Chapel Hill to provide us some more services. And it's great to hear the hospital in much better shape today than it was three years ago. And thank everybody for being here tonight, have a good evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Buchanan?
Pretty much everything's been covered. I know the other day in the workshop, they talked about 15% of our population, our employees, that's 200 people. I don't know if anybody looked up the numbers or anything, that's 200 people we lose to nutrition and anything else, like the detention officers. I think there's 22 that are, we need to replace, not replace, but they're missing, and we don't have them, people in those positions at this difficult time, because I know we're running classes, and every time I get ready to run a class for the sheriff, it's put off, because they don't have the personnel to run the facility. And if I remember correctly, the old jail was 117 people, this facility is 525, and I think there's 350 some people in that facility. So what happens is with the 22 that were short, we wind up with the deputies coming off the line to go work in the facility, and that's not a good idea, because we need them on the road. So we wind up being short both ways, but that's what's happening to us now at the college. We're not able to run a class. I think we're going to run one in April. I hope that comes to be. But I noticed the other day that the 15% was about 200 of our employees that we've lost.
Yes, sir. And Commissioner Buchanan, that statistic was the number of overall employees who, when they went through the exit interview, said that their pay was the reason why they left. So that was that, that number that you had come up with, that 15%?
Correct. That was correct. It was due to pay.
And I believe our detention office right now has, we did have 26 vacancies. We were happy this morning. We were able to welcome 12 new employees, and I believe three of those, or four of those, Ben might help me remember, were going to the sheriff's office. So we're very, very happy to welcome them aboard, and each week, we're trying to get those positions filled with highly qualified individuals so that we can train them and keep them.
Well, what's happened across the country, it's all over the place, and law enforcement's out of the house, we're just not finding the good officers that come in and go to school. Napkin would probably tell you the same thing, I will, or Jack, some of the law enforcement officers that are sitting up here. But right now, it's bleak about trying to find good officers. Right now, the police department, they're going ahead and they're trying to do a recruiting that's going to take place on the 25th, I think, is this Friday, and they're trying to put together a class where the College Will Runability Summer Class, trying to help the chief with his personnel, he has 12 openings. And I can't remember what the sheriff told me how many openings he had, but there's quite a few openings within the county government, but I wanted to thank everybody for what they do. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Vice Chairman?
Appreciate everybody coming out tonight, that we're speaking in regards to the zoning and rezoning. If you want to have some of the most difficult decisions or contentious decisions that take place, when it's the zoning and rezoning comes about, those are tough, because it's impacting either the current landowner or the landowners that are next door to them. And that brings us to one of the biggest challenges of Onslow County is growth. We were a really great secret there for a long time, but the secret is getting out, and there's a lot of people coming to Onslow County, and growth is tremendous, which impacts the need for people finding land and redeveloping or developing land and homes, which then transfers, that growth transfers to a problem for the school system. I know that we heard the statement about 35 kids in a classroom. Not all of that is attributed to the schools or redistricting or developments coming in. The school system is also being hit hard by vacancies and not being able to find teachers to put them in classrooms. And that is becoming a very difficult challenge, where just a few years ago, if you had a vacancy, you could pull up and you'd have 20, 25, 30 applicants. Now it'll take you 20, 25, 30 days to get two applicants. And quite often, those applicants don't have the certifications to go into that classroom to provide those services. So the school system is doing a lot to bring people to Onslow County, and I feel sure there'll be some things in their budget that they're going to try and get people to come in and teach. But growth is a challenge, growth is going to continue to be a challenge, and I think our planning department does a great job of going in and looking at this, making sure it matches our land use patterns or what's in place there, the comprehensive plans, and then we get it ahead, get it, and we are able to look at it and really digest what's going on with those rezonings. So either, anytime we make a decision on zoning, somebody's going to be unhappy. But Onslow County is a great place, and people want to come here, and we've got to, we need homes to put them in, and we are in a shortage, even though we did have 1,153 permits that were put out this year. So it's a great place, and people found out about it. So we appreciate everybody coming out tonight and sharing those things, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Foster. I'd like to say that we need to pray for the Russian-Ukraine situation that could be really impacting the US if they invade Ukraine. Don't know to what extent yet, but pray for those people that's in Ukraine, and pray for the people that has to be on the front lines fighting, no matter what side it is. I've got, Ms. Manager, I've got a complaint from two Commissioners, Commissioner Buchanan and Commissioner Bennett. They said that they can't see the flag when they do the pledge. So can we move that flag before they can see it next time?
We do have the technology to move the flag.
And I apologize for not putting that up front.
Yes, we will take care of that for the Commissioners, yes.
Little locomotion to get it moving there.
Now, everybody from Commissioner Buchanan this way can see the flag, but we don't have a problem with it.
I don't think Foster can see it.
I can't see it either.
Oh, you can? Okay.
I can see it perfectly, so we're good to go.
Well, anyway, if you'll take care of that, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir, I will.
I'd like to encourage everybody to come to the March 14 School Board and Commissioner Joint Meeting. That'll be open to the public.
That's correct. Well, we're going to have one of our regular meetings, of course, the first Monday of March, and then the week after that, we will have a joint meeting with the school board, and that's going to be over at their central administrative offices at 9:00 in the morning on Monday, March 14.
Okay. So I'd encourage people to come to that meeting if they're interested in the school, and the school is a big chunk of our budget, as everybody knows, and they not built cheap. So other than that, I appreciate everybody coming out, and I'd like to have a local motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you, gentlemen.